Okay, it being 7:30, I'm going to open our meeting tonight. For the record, this meeting is being recorded. And I think we will begin this evening within 9 Mill Street, the informal discussion. So, gentlemen?
Thank you. First let me introduce myself. I'm Joe Parisi, new director of public works. So I don't know if you have any digital projections, but I do have some copies here that I can pass around. Yeah, if you could, that'd be great. Alright, so...
Oh, it's okay.
Alright, thank you. So, I'll talk briefly and then perhaps hand it off to Mark to maybe give us some more details as he's more into it than I am on this. But, you know, since I've been here, basically, it was told to me that there was a house that was purchased, I don't know how many years ago now, but certainly had a lot of acreage. There was actually a water line that the town has going through this property with an easement on it. And so, it was thought that this property would be valuable for a pump station at some point in time in the future for perhaps getting some water from Redding or some other potential sources or needs. So, you know, it is a lot of land that we want to sort of keep in some fashion, not the house though that came along with it. So, the goal here is to really, you know, divide the property, the open acreage with the water line and the house lot from each other so that we can, you know, sell the house and keep the land with the water line on it. And potentially have, you know, that area to be built upon in the future with a pump station or generator, who knows what the use is, but it already has a water line physically there. If there's a water line break there, we obviously are going to go in there and maintain it. So that's the intent. Now the question is, well, how to do all that? How to separate it and sort of, you know, not spend, you know, a ton of money on this? We do want to make some money back on the purchase of the house, but we certainly think in the future if there's going to be some development of a pump station or so, we would certainly do what it takes to make proper access to the back lot. I think currently, you know, there's sufficient adequate access to the house lot with the driveway that's always been there. You know, you can see that, you know, underneath the color, you know, pink and orange, but that certainly is, you know, been the access for this house off of the Mill Street. So, what we then came down to to try to make this parcel conforming to the degree that we can is to reserve an area of land that creates a sort of a roadway into the back lot with a cul-de-sac, provides, you know, sufficient frontage for both lots. With the access of the house lot from the existing driveway and, you know, potentially some future development, we'll do improvements to the roadway at that point in time. You know, nothing really needs to happen, I think, at this point to change, you know, the land, to cut down trees or any of that until some point in the future. So that's the, I guess, the big picture of what we're trying to accomplish here. And, you know, Mark, I won't feel anything to add, but you certainly will answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, just I'll take one step back on that. The history of this lot, as you guys are probably familiar, at one time we were looking to get water from MWRA through Mill Street in Redding. We went out and bought this property about the same time we bought that and over stepped back into the picture and said, "Look, we already supply you water, we can meet all your needs, it'll be cheaper without the buy-ins and the infrastructure we'll have to do to go to the MWRA." So, we purchased this lot and then have never had a use for it. One thought was to sell it off as is, but there's been a lot of sentiment that they're not creating any more land in town, we own a piece of land, we can keep a piece of land that we could use in the future, as Joe was referring to, and we don't have a need for the house. The DPW is obviously not in the business of maintaining simple family houses. So we've been trying to look at how to sell this property for actually quite an extended time. It's only, the total property has only 95 feet of frontage on Mill Street, so obviously you split it into two, you can't get two, you know, limited frontage lots at 50 feet each out of 95 feet. So, we've consulted with the building commissioner, with Danielle to an extent, and this is kind of the plan that we've come up with and we're presenting to you tonight, so...
Okay. If you, however, if you create this cul-de-sac, then you solve both problems. You give frontage for that lot as well as for the lot in the back. You create the frontage if you create this cul-de-sac. Is that the intent?
To actually construct a roadway?
Well, I mean, you could, I mean, you could lay it out if you did a layout so that in the future if you needed to construct it or something, you'd have, you know, a layout that would actually make both lots legal.
Sure.
I mean, it's a, it's a concept that's done by developers on a regular basis.
Designing the layout of the roadway?
Yeah, well, putting in a cul-de-sac in order to create frontage. You get the whole, all the way around the cul-de-sack is frontage for the lot in the back. And along the side of it is frontage for the other lot. So you can create the frontage that you need to make both lots legal. I think the concern that, I think the only concern we had when we looked at this in the beginning was creating two non-conforming lots, you know, and we don't, we kind of frowned on developers and the board of appeals has stood with us on this in not allowing people to take variances in frontage because once you start down there, that's a slippery slope. So, having a way to make both of these lots legal, that's, and this is exactly what a developer would have done, is put in a road in the cul-de-sack because now the road and the cul-de-sack become the frontage for the two lots.
Right, and that is the intent, that this would be a laid-out roadway with a cul-de-sack with proper frontage. So I guess the question is, would you need a set of plans that officially lays out that from the area survey plan?
I think it would be a, I don't think it's that difficult and I think it would be a good idea.
Right.
I think it would be a good idea to have it and have it and then bring it in and have it approved. Now, whether you construct it or not, having it approved and maybe doing renewals on that approval as you go along every three years or so to make sure that you keep, to keep this in place so it doesn't expire, if you will, that will allow you to have that frontage. Because we have had situations where a cul-de-sack was put in but not built all the way out. So we have allowed that. So there is a little bit of precedent there for you to do that.
Okay. Well, we certainly can go back to the engineering firm to draw a set of plans that you can, you know, approve and sign and we can record it, the registry of deeds.
That's the best plan. I'm going to let the rest of the board, you got any comments?
Yeah, I'm curious about just the balance of the parcel. It looks like there's opportunity for more than one buildable parcel.
The reason is, I don't believe, because of what the wetlands area within the parcel?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. You got anything, Dave?
No, I agree with you. Get it engineered.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I can, there is no, presently no water line in the ground. There is a 20-foot easement, is that correct?
There is a water line that went in in the mid-'70s. So this, the parcel on the corner of Park Street and Main Street where the three office condos are and the parcels at, I believe it's 364 Park Street, were all one property at one time.
Okay, yeah.
At that time, we actually put a water main in. It was basically to attempt to loop the water on Mill Street. There's no way to circuit it.
Back into...
So physically, the water main goes through this property and goes out through 364 Park Street, the driveway, and it...
I think I see the easement.
Yep.
I can see that easement coming, you know, from, what's north? Oh, from the north, coming down into, into, you know, the parcel here towards Lot 3B. And then it turns and then it goes back down the right away, is that correct?
Correct. So it kind of, it's a little bit north of where the pink roadway is shown.
Where it enters Sexton Road Street.
Kind of underneath that, but...
Okay.
But it does come out, so it comes from the north of the property, so this will be 364 Park Street.
Right.
It comes through their property onto this property, comes down like this, kind of sweeps around and comes right back out to Park Street to connect to the water main in Park Street.
Okay, okay. So, so the parcel to the north of the cul-de-sack area, that's, that's North Redding's property, correct? That was part of the 3.2, that's part of the 3.2 acres?
Correct, yeah.
And that, that's, looks like, it looks like, I don't know, is there, there may be, there are wetlands in there.
Yeah, there's a bunch of wetlands.
Is there, is it all wet?
So...
Pretty wet. It's pretty wet all the way through there.
Yeah, well...
Kind of...
It's all wet through there.
So we're showing, and this actually came from when we were, our conceptual plans for the pump station from the town of Redding. We're not saying that there is a plan to build this at any time. We don't really have a defined use for it. But yes, there's wetlands that go on this piece of the property and then there's wetlands that kind of sweep around. This is the, actually, the Ipswich River is the southern border, but there's wetlands off that that kind of come around all the way to this point. So, the house itself is on uplands, this kind of sliver through the middle is on uplands, but there are wetlands on either side of that.
On either side, okay. I was just thinking, could you, can you break off that upper, that north easterly lot there?
No.
But it looks like it's too wet.
Yep.
There's no wet.
At one time, we were trying to get the, I think it's 125,000 square feet for a conforming lot with, and we had kind of, it was a reverse C shape, kind of giving all the wetlands to the house.
Yeah.
And then we took a step back from that. So we've gone through a number of iterations on what to do here. We actually met with the ZBA at the end of May, and that's when you guys had offered a letter. And so, that's why we're here tonight, is basically to try to resolve where we were at the end of May to this plan to, you know, what can we bring forward. Quick discussions, I don't know that if it's, with this plan, I don't know that we need a ZBA variance because there are no variances on it at this point. So we might be able to withdraw it from them and then proceed with...
And we had talked, Warren and I had talked about this, and I talked to Joe about this also, and having that engineered plan is the way to go, I think. It makes it so much easier. It gets the frontage where it needs to be and it keeps us from creating a situation that we're going to look bad.
Right.
Basically, basically what it does, the town follows the rules, it's making everybody else follow. That's an important thing for us to do.
Not a problem. In fact, I think, you know, we had intention to do so, we just want to make sure we're going down the right, you know, path.
I believe you are.
So if we are, then we'll proceed with, you know, doing some engineering work on the plan.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
I mean, if you move the pumping station to kind of where the southern portion of that cul-de-sack is, would that free up the back area for another buildable lot?
Well, we're not developers, we're not looking for more buildable lots. We're looking to house an infrastructure, water infrastructure, you know, for the town.
Right.
You know, if within, you know, that one lot, we need to build a couple of different structures, you know, maybe like I said, a generator and a pump house or some other thing, we can do it all within that one lot. We don't need to have separate lots.
Well, I'm not saying for us, I'm saying to sell.
No, we would have no interest in selling any more of this land, just, just a house and what's sufficient for area around that.
And then just keeping the rest of the...
Yeah, because it has a water line in it and everything that we want to retain for whatever use we could have in the future. We want to limit what we have in the future.
We own a lot of land for future nebulous uses that we never use.
Well, you know, I think, wisdom in holding on to that land because I believe that there's, there may be other uses that the town would have in this, and this is a nice clean deal and we'll, and we'll have that for the future if we need it for something.
If they split that one lot off, Ryan, then they still have the two acres behind it. And they, if they find later on what they need and they can do that in one area, then they maybe they'll split that off and, you know...
Future planning, future planning, what the needs are.
Right now, they want to keep the two acres.
Options are open.
And it's, there's a lot of wetlands in there, so they're also protecting that.
There's a lot of wetback there if you go back there.
Really, there's a lot of these parcels around town that we're stowing away for future use. And then the use goes away and then we continue to stow them away for future uses that...
Well, one thing about this one is it does already have, you know, water line in the ground.
Yeah, I'm just saying...
No, not just an easement, a water line in the ground.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was a future water line.
No, no, it's in the ground. That's why, that's why I was clarifying.
I apologize.
That's okay, not a problem.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I think you're on the right path, so...
Danielle, last question.
I just need a question, just with regard to how we would handle the subdivision. The property doesn't have frontage now because it will be unconstructed. So if we did approve a subdivision to allow this new cul-de-sack to act as frontage, we just want to be sure, I just want to make sure I understand how we're handling that. If we're allowing the frontage to be the Paper Street layout, I mean, the building inspector communicated to me that he wouldn't recognize frontage until it was at least a gravel accessible way. So I'm, I just need to make sure I understand if this does come in for a subdivision, though to sell the lot now but to construct the way later that gives it frontage, I just want to make sure that won't be problematic for us, since I know other properties like the Cedar Street subdivision, for example, we've told people they couldn't do that. So I just want to be sure I understand if they're going to do the work to do a subdivision plan, I want to be sure I understand how that will need to work.
Okay, do you understand the question?
Well, I think I do. Going back and forth on this, you know, I guess my, my view of it is that, you know, we have an existing house lot that has adequate access. You know, I can, I can clear some shrubs and throw some gravel down and, you know, make a path or a road along 200 foot of that house lot, but why? You know, really, why? You know? As far as the other lot, I don't really need to get access to have, I'm not looking to build, so again, why disturb what's there, make a mess of things until the full picture is known as to what to build. I would like to present and actually have the survey done of the roadway that will be separated out from all the other areas, have the two different lots, be able to record that. And I think every developer, you know, goes through that process, record, and at some point they'll stop building when they want to get their money back, right? A little different here, we don't want to necessarily sell the back lot, we're going to retain that, we just want to sell the house lot.
I think this is a little different too, Danielle, in that the, they're not looking for a building permit because the house and everything that already exists.
Yeah, I mean, you could...
So we're not going to have to go to the building inspector.
You know, we'll come back later and deal with that.
Would the house not then become non-conforming? I mean, that's, it's fine, I'm not trying to stand in the way of a good plan. I just, you know, I just want to make sure I understand when the subdivision is dealt with, I want to know how we're going to...
Well, I mean, again, we've had a situation where a cul-de-sack was developed, was, was put in, but it was not built, just a turnaround was put in it, but the cul-de-sack was still there in, on the plan.
Right, I mean...
So this is going to be a similar situation. It may be stretching it a little bit, but I think it's legitimate in that once the plan is done and it's approved, because we're not looking for a building permit, it's an existing house that has also some frontage on it.
I mean, if I may, I mean, certainly that back lot, we can stamp that not buildable until such time a road is approved, you know?
I got, one more question. When I'm looking at the access right now, you've got the orange lot and then you've got the red, and the red that, where it comes out, that's 50 feet, is that correct? Right on Mill Street?
Right here.
Right there?
That is a little bit less than 50 feet. We're keeping it out of the wetlands area, but we've, I think, we've got about 41 feet there.
No, I guess it would be a luxury then, wouldn't it?
It is. I'm not saying don't do it, but it is.
What I'm saying is, is the rest, the rest of that area is larger than 50 feet.
This right here?
Yeah, because then what you do is you change the, you have to give them, give the house lot more room back 50 feet so that you've got enough to create the frontage. No, the frontage, and then it's got its own frontage, oh, but it's not, it's not big enough anymore, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we went round and round on this.
Yeah, 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 no, it's not big enough anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the...
So I think we landed here and I think we're in a good spot. And again, we'll come back with...
I understand Danielle's, Danielle's issue.
Yeah, well, it's the, you know, the building inspector...
It's doing some, building it out so that, you know, it doesn't come back and bite us.
We certainly don't want to, you know, deem this a buildable lot if we need to have, you know, a built roadway.
Right.
So you can, yeah, but this is already built upon it, I'm looking for any...
Yeah, but you took away its frontage.
Yeah.
Because you basically subdivided it.
Yeah, but we're going to create the frontage again with the survey plan.
Yeah, but then that's, yeah, it's paper and the question is...
Well, it's, it's got the, it's got the driveway that comes into it, it's got adequate access for a sufficient, you know, number of feet.
Yeah.
And I can, I can, you know, certainly, you know, a little bit, but I don't know that it really is necessary to sort of, you know, do more of that.
What I would...
The access is already there, you know what I'm saying?
What I would encourage you to do at this point is to get those, get the designs done, get it drawn, and take a look at, and take a look at the possibility of doing something to, and maybe, maybe converse with the building inspector about what he's going to want to see in order to make this, you know, because we really have to, he's really our...
Yeah, he's, he's gonna...
Understood, I'll leave with the building inspector, hold it out, they'll take a look. You know, I understand what your situation is and...
Yeah, so let's, let's, you're on the right path, so I'd say, keep going.
Very good.
Keep going and then, but do talk to the building inspector about how, what level of work might need to be done for him to be happy.
Understood.
Okay?
All right, thank you very much.
There you go.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Still got nine minutes before we can do 124.
Okay, why don't we take a look at, we got a couple of ZBAs? Do we?
Do you have a ZBA standing?
We do. One of them was the 200 River Park project that we voted on at the last meeting, so I'm assuming our comments would be in support. And just to note that we did approve the site plan for that, I don't know if you wanted to add anything more?
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think we're all set with that. Any comments?
Just a little, a little blurb saying we support that, right?
Pardon?
You want to, you want to send the ZBA a little, you know...
Yeah, we, we already voted on that.
Yeah, we voted in support of it.
Yeah, so even tell them we support that.
Yeah.
Definitely tell them we support that, because we, basically we did.
Yep, we voted it, so...
Okay, so 12 Nutt Road. Has everybody read the blurb on that?
Danielle, this is, this is my share file, give me.
Oh, really?
What? Oh, I don't mind.
Does it matter?
No, now it's coming through.
Oh, just kind of slapped aside. Okay, any comments on that? It seems to fit within the four corners, I mean... Do you have any comments on the 12 Nutt Road? I mean, it seems to, it's home occupation, sounds like it's just an office.
Right.
Obviously, they're going to be, they should, the common, give the common conditions that they're in, you know, people aren't coming to the house to be treated or anything like that, you know, that it's in the client's home. As long as that's made clear, I think that's probably just fine.
Sounds like an application.
Agreed.
Yeah, sound okay to you guys?
I wish.
Okay, looks like, tell them we don't see any issue with that, but, you know, again, standard conditions.
Sure.
So...
I'm supposed to have share file? That's how I'm supposed to begin to this meeting, right?
You can, if you don't have it on there, you can always look at the CTC website where the meeting materials, the voting...
I know I have mine on, that's why I was remembering.
Oh. You can add that to the inter...
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
It sounds like it's raining again.
Okay, we got some minutes here, let's take a look at what we got here. Ryan, would you make a motion on a couple sets of minutes there? Do you have... Mr. Carroll.
I move to accept the minutes dated May 18, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is any corrections or comments? If you're not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I thought I could show four in favor, no opposed, and Mr. Johnson's not with us this evening. Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Pierce, I move to accept the minutes dated June 1, 2021. Second.
I have a motion, second by Mr. Robloff. Is there any comments, questions, or...
Yeah, there was some grammatical error, if I could find it. Can't put sticky notes on this one.
Oh.
I could on my other one.
Minor?
Yeah, it was minor.
Let's roll with it then.
All right.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is any further discussion? If you're not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I thought I could show four in favor, no opposed, and Mr. Johnson's not with us this evening, so... Okay, take care of that. So, let's see, oh, you know what? Okay, we're good there. So, you know, we could do that 265 Main Street, that's not going to be too much of a big deal, I don't think.
I don't think so.
Let's do that. Yes, please.
Good evening, Michael Dolan from Law Firm of Brown Runway Care, on behalf of the applicant Volta Charging. Volta is a national electric vehicle charging station company, and my client's proposing to install two units in the parking lot of the Stop &amp; Shop on Main Street. What will be doing, or proposing to do, is re-stripe two of the existing parking spaces to denote that it is the electric vehicle charging station spot, and then adjacent to it is the charging station with the line run into the car. In the northerly spot, you'll see on the digital version of the plans, the charging station itself will go in a triangular portion of a striped area adjacent to the proposed charging stall. And on the southerly location, what we're proposing is putting the charging station in the island adjacent to the parking spot there. For that one, we will obviously make sure that we, there's a tree in that landscape area, we're going to protect that while we do our work. There's only a minimal amount of the existing island that would need to be converted into that charging station. The Stop &amp; Shop is thrilled, they have an understanding that customers are very excited about the electricity is free for vehicles, unlike, you know, you don't have to have a Tesla to get a Tesla spot, anybody can use these spots. And we are seeking a minor modification to the site plan in order to hopefully obtain your approval to do that.
Okay, sign of the times, actually.
Yes.
But I have a couple generic questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The, the cord that goes to plug into the cars, is that universal between all the D E electric cars? Is everybody, I mean, I know for like the OBD-2 systems, in the OBD-1 systems, you had to have nine different connectors in order to test a car, and when they went to the OBD-2 system, the car...
Yeah, it's a good question.
It became a single, everybody has the exact same plug.
Yeah, this is a Level 2 charging station. I'll let my John, John from Volta, John Lawrence from Volta Charging answer that more directly, but...
Sure, so the plug we use, it's a Level 2 charger and it's called a J1772. It'll charge every single car that's out on the market. The only exception set is a Tesla, but when you buy a Tesla, they give you a little adapter, so you put that on the cord and you can charge. So effectively, it charges 100% of the electric vehicles out there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
I wondered about that, so...
But by comparison, a lot of the DC fast charging, we see, can only charge about 30% of the cars out there, and then like Tesla, you don't want to charge Teslas.
Right.
Level two will charge everything.
Right, excellent, excellent. Okay, any comments or questions from the board here?
I guess I'm more, I'm just interested in the protection of the units themselves, um, other bollards and stuff.
Yeah, the, the northerly, uh, unit will have four bollards around it to protect it. Um, and the other one in the la- in the island, obviously, has the, uh, concrete, uh, curving around that one. So, um, those are the kind of models we've used throughout the country, they keep, uh, regularly good safety practices and standards, so that's what we were proposing here, um, we saw some comments of the, um.
Yeah, I'm trying to get in the picture.
Uh, had a comment about that, and I think our plans hopefully adequately address this.
Well, we have a little trouble pulling the plan, it's taken a while for Sheriff File to bring it up, so, um, the one that's on the island, I, I wanted to see a picture of it to see if, if it might make sense to put one bollard in the front.
Well, um, I have a, I have a photo of, I apologize, it's Google Earth, so it has some snow in it, but that's essentially, uh, we're far from that right now, but that's essentially, uh, this is the tree in the middle, and we'd be proposing it right there.
Okay, so my, uh, okay, so on the other side of that, could you, can I?
On the other side of what?
Let me see.
Yeah.
It's, it's over here, over here, on this side, is this just?
So, this, this is the main thoroughfare in front of the, uh, the Stop and Shop, this is the last spot.
So my only, so my only thought would be that if you're gonna put one right here that you put, with somebody swinging this parking lot, going up on the curb and going in, um, just one bollard in the front to protect it.
Okay.
If that, if that makes sense.
Sure.
I know, because, I mean, that's where they're gonna hit, and the other thing that occurs to me is that in the wintertime, see all that snow's pushed back?
Yep.
Pushed back past where your unit's gonna go. So I would say that if you put one bollard in the front, you're gonna prevent that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, just a thought.
Mr. Pierce, ever.
Mr. Hayden.
So the fire department wants to get, uh, a disconnect switch that they can access through their, uh, Knox box. So it's a lock switch and the keys within the Knox box.
Yeah, and, and my client has familiarity with doing that, um, it's not the first time that's been requested, we think they fly with that. There may be a, uh, a specific detail to how our system is set up for that, uh, in, in, in connection with that purpose, but rest assured, it would meet the spirit of that request, and we would obviously do whatever the fire department wanted before we'd ever install it. I think there might be, I asked my client about that, 'cause Danielle had sent along that comment previously, and he said there was one, uh, technical aspect to it, they might have to run by an engineer, but whatever we did would be satisfactory to the fire department first.
Yeah, once you come up with your solution, I would suggest you go, just go down and talk to the fire department.
They're, they're very accessible.
Okay.
You know, and, and, you know, you go down there with what you want, and if, they'll tell you right away if it's gonna meet their, their needs, you know? They're just trying to keep people safe.
Absolutely.
The electrical code actually requires that if you have an, uh, an electro- electrical unit of some kind, that they're, that visually, you can see the shut-off switch for it.
Okay.
So you have to be able to do that, 'cause when you do, when we do install houses and everything, there, for pumps and so forth, there has to be a switch that you can see from where the pump is, to see that it's turned off before you handle anything there, so. I mean, although this unit is meant to be handled live, so, that's how that works, but, uh, but I know the electrical, uh, inspector will probably want that. That's, that shut-off switch.
Chairman, I have a question too, so.
Yes, go ahead, Dale.
Is, is, uh, it seems, there's only two, I mean, obviously, this is a start, are, are, is the plan to add more based on demand? And do you have enough?
Conceivably, I think they're gonna test the waters, and if, you know, the people in North Reading want this more, they'll, they'll probably go do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Is the one, the one, I guess it would be south there too, is almost really serving, you know, other, other retail, or the other one north there is certainly, uh.
That's right, so there can be some shared use, although Stop and Shop probably would like to see it primarily there.
Right.
Right.
Is there a sufficient conduit size to feed additional ones, you know, that see three-quarter and all that stuff underground?
Yeah, typically, we only run one four-inch conduit to, to each room.
Oh, it's a four, okay, so I was looking more, I think, the ones that are in the building. You get an underground four, but would the four be adequate though, to, again, for, for all that work you're doing for electrical, or you set up so that you could add more?
Typically, they can pull, like, if we wanted to, the one on the south, if we wanted to put another station on that, we'd be able to pull, pull a wire through there.
Okay.
You tend to space them out the way that you see them here, um, because the media component, we wanna get kind of the most bank and prop bucks.
Right, right.
Kind of separate them.
Okay.
But there, there are cases where grocers come back to us, we've actually had complaints that there's not enough charging, and in that case, we'll come back and, um, you know, install more.
And is there, uh, the one where you're, um, again, the south one, where you come across perpendicular to face of the building, and then you jog, and then go parallel to the island, is there a reason you're doing that versus just jumping to the island and like pull there, is it, is it? Just curious why you would, uh.
Are you guys, are we coming out of the building?
Well, out of building, no problem, perpendicular, right, out, and then as you approach the island, you're, you're banking south again, and then over to this charging station? Just curious if, uh, is it, is, wouldn't you wanna just get into the island, or is there an obstruction?
If I think I'm understanding correctly, Stop and Shop is.
What he's saying is, would you just straighten here and then go down as opposed to come in like that?
Um, yeah, we could, we could look at that, I've.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not telling you how to do it, I was, I was just curious, are you, uh, it seems like a lot more, you, 'cause you're, this is a trench, right? You're not jacking, is, this is a, this is, you're going right across.
Yeah, this would be, this would be a trench, um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, quite frankly, this is how Stop and Shop wants us to do it, so that's.
Yeah, just doing, yeah.
That's what we do.
I have no problem with it, I'm just asking.
It may be something that Stop and Shop has there that they know about, that they haven't really disclosed.
They've been more involved in our conduit designs than, than any customer we've ever dealt with, like, particularly, we come out of the building, make sure the facade isn't, um, messed up at all.
Understood.
Subject in that area?
No, so, so it's, it's further over.
Right next to Starbucks, right?
Right?
Right next to Starbucks, right?
Yeah, well, it's.
Starbucks, Starbucks.
Middle front.
Yeah, it's in the middle, two big islands.
Subject is next to Starbucks, right there.
Well, no, there, there's actually, there's actually three systems there, well, actually, the, the new one is around behind the building now, and so everything on the, on the, on the, uh, southern end of that, it's been collected now, runs around the back, and there's a treatment plant out back.
Oh, okay.
But there is still a system in the very front that feeds Stop and Shop, Stop and Shop's not tied into the treatment plant.
Oh.
No, they ha- it has a bioclast system out front, so.
Okay, I know, that's right, that area is up.
Yeah, I just happen to know.
Well, that's your business.
Sure.
I was just going to suggest, um, I had drafted, um, an approval letter for this, and I put a condition in it that says the fire department will be given a remote disconnect switch within sight of the charging station, which will be keyed to the fire department's lockbox key. I could add something to that that says, you know, comma, or another, uh, solution that is agreeable to the fire department, subject to their final approval, or something like that, just to be sure you're not locked into that.
Yeah, that sounds, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't, don't, don't lock them down.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're gonna, I think it's gonna be as much input from the electrical inspector as from the fire department. The fire department just wants access, the electrical inspector's gonna want code, so that's where you're gonna, that, that, the two have to cross someplace, yes.
Yeah.
So. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? So, hearing none, do you, uh, we have a, um, a motion here for a minor modification, I would agree that this is a minor modification, I don't, uh.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, um, huge issues here as far as site plan or anything like that, so. And I do, uh, if you make sure the bollards are on the plan and everything that you bring to us, if we voted tonight, then, um, you'd have to bring a plan with all of these changes on it, including the locations of the switches and all that, for us to sign, before you could work with it, everything. Okay, Mr. Carroll, if you would please.
Mr. Pierce, I move that the community planning commission vote to grant effective minor modification, approve plan entitled Volta Stop and Shop, number twenty-four oh six, North Reading, Phase One, two sixty-five Main Street, North Reading, Mass. one one eight six four, dated March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, brought by Kimberly Horn, with conditions as noted in the minor modification approval letter, dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as amended this evening.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Mr. Radloff, is any further questions? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, let the record show four in favor, no opposed, thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Wanted to one ten, one twenty-four.
I will, uh, go into that.
You're having central, I am.
Do you prefer to have Dropbox back, or do you prefer to have a laptop so you can use this?
Okay.
Dropbox worked perfectly.
I mean, would you prefer to keep using the iPad, or would you prefer?
It's small, it's convenient. I was thinking that maybe, uh, if you schedule something next Wednesday, including the guy by the wall here.
Okay, um, we're gonna go to, uh, we'll go to one ten dash one twenty-four Main Street, a special.
I couldn't, I opened up.
Uh, permanent request, uh, to continue in public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Paul with Civil Design Consultants, representing the app.
Yeah, Wednesday afternoon, like, three o'clock, please.
So this is, uh, one ten to one twenty-four Main Street, the, uh, Reading lumber site, and, uh, previously, we were before you on, uh, in May, I believe it was, uh, to discuss the project. Since then, we have been back to the conservation commission, we have, uh, got their approval, uh, we got all the peer review sign-offs. Uh, at the last hearing, we had discussed some notes for outdoor storage, so I revised the plan to put a couple labels on there to reference two new notes on the plan, notes thirteen and fourteen, uh, those both reference outdoor storage, both under the front facade, and then in the rear and sides of the building, um, that's really the only change to the plan that's been made since, uh, now and then. So if the commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, and you say you have your conservation commission approval?
Correct.
Thirteen and fourteen. Okay. Any, uh, comments or questions from the board? And building inspector's all set with this too, as far as your ele- floor elevations and all that?
Floor elevations, yes.
Your floor elevations, yes, so.
I think he's still concerned about the, the storage of outside materials, though.
No, that's the thirteen and fourteen.
Yeah, no, I saw that, I mean, I didn't, did he see that since his, did you read his note?
Since the three, since that, no.
I don't know if it's been before or after. Did the building inspector see notes thirteen and fourteen on the plan?
Uh.
'Cause I, I read his, his memo that said that he was concerned about the storage.
So he, he wanted to know who the entities were, who were leasing storage.
Okay.
My question was, is that storage area specific enough for, for you to approve of outdoor storage? I just wanna be sure that you're satisfied with how it's shown.
Okay.
You mean the descriptions in number thirteen and fourteen? Whether those are complete enough?
I was wondering if it uses your seasonal products or something, well, I guess I was wondering, do you need a border, or do you need anything about fencing? I mean, I guess those were my questions, but.
Well, our bylaw requires fencing.
Yeah, and there's no fencing here, I noticed that, this, the site is wide open when the, when the, when the facility is closed, um, which is kind of interesting. You could drive right behind that building, I'm s- I'm, I'm really surprised that they don't have a security issue.
Yeah, and the notes are good, but they don't limit it to any particular area, right?
Right.
Which is, I think, how we're going, we're going right now.
Just behind the building.
'Cause they just started storing stuff everywhere.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, this says that they're not gonna do that anymore, that's, it won't be, uh, stored, um, should not be allowed to the sides of the existing building without approval.
Yeah. We've had stuff in before, and they've done it anyways.
Well, I, my comment would be if they're gonna, if they plan to keep it behind the building, put it on the plan where it's gonna be, that way the building inspector's got some teeth if he goes down there or somewhere else.
Right.
Says, on the plan, it says it was gonna be here, and now it's here.
I think the idea behind this was to show where it was not gonna be.
Well.
No, I'm serious, I mean, that, 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 you know, it's, so that instance, you know, it's, storage of materials incidental to the operation of the business would be stored out behind, you know, not on the sides of the building, or someplace else.
Right.
But we all, but the bylaw also requires that if you're gonna store those materials, there'd be fencing, and it also says, without approval of the, of the planning board, so. So, you know, they, either, we're not gonna violate the bylaw and allow them to store without fencing, so, I mean, I think that was the intent of this.
Yeah.
So do you think there needs to be more verbiage there to, um, to, um, make it clearer? I mean, it seems to me that the, uh, intent here was to show that there was not gonna be any storage on the sides of the building, not necessarily, um, not necessarily where it was going to be stored, 'cause anyplace other than that would for all intents and purposes be fair game. Out behind the building, out behind the other buildings, out behind a fence.
I guess if the building inspector's trying with the language.
Yeah, I, well, that, that was, you know, I.
Yeah, I mean, on that new building, you could store stuff on the side and technically be in violation, but it fits in the front of the other one, so.
Right. Well, I mean, the stuff in the front is, is delineated as far as what it's gonna be.
But does it, do, do, do those notes apply to all existing buildings, like, for instance, the shed, which is not noted here, which, uh, I, I think, uh, Reading Lumber refers to it as Shed One, is it, um?
So, the intent was, uh, just behind the main building in the front, because, uh, as was noted, there's a screening requirement, and, um, really, the way the site is, it's raised in the front, it's lower in the rear, if they're storing stuff behind the main building, it's, you're not really gonna see it from the street. So it was the intent to have it behind the main building, and as the chair said, um, it's really more of an intent to show where they're not gonna store it, because, um, really, what they do now is they get paving stones and lumber plywood, things like that, sometimes they have to move stuff around to make room, so they didn't really wanna be limited by certain fenced-in areas for their storage for day-to-day operations.
I think the only way you could approve it, if it had a limit on either end of the building for the extent of the storage behind, but to your point, with it being lower, I don't know that you're really gonna notice that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is quite a bit lower, so you could store quite a bit, not see it driving by.
Right, it really, the sides of the building are the drive aisle, right?
Well, the other thing I would say that is, however, this is, um, that in the future, there'll, there'll probably be some oversight. In other words, the building inspector's, well, it's probably gonna go look, and they're probably gonna look to make sure that if they do begin to store, that they, that they'd be in violation, or that they would, uh, that it'd be necessary to fence it, as it says in the bylaw.
Yeah.
So it may behoove them to put some short pieces of fencing up in the corners, at the very least, to provide them with some, uh, protection for anything they might be storing out there, so.
Okay.
And I would recommend that. Mr. Hayden, you got anything?
I agree with you.
Okay.
I agree with you.
You'll be a little proactive.
It's always been an issue.
Get them to be a little proactive in the fencing and, and the protection and everything, so that we don't run into a problem with it.
Okay.
Right? I know this has been a long road for you, so. But, you know, there were things that had to be done, I mean, and they were all very good, I mean, they were very, absolutely correct with their floor above the floodplain, I mean, it's only good for you.
Yep, absolutely.
In the end, so, I mean, everything that was done so far, I think, is actually helping you, so, um, so we'd like to continue to do that, but we'd like you to cooperate too, so.
Yep.
Help us. So, do you have anything else? Are we comfortable with a vote on this? Okay, Mr. Carroll, if you would please.
Mr. Pierce, I move that the community planning commission vote to approve plan entitled one ten Main Street, North Reading, Mass. Zero one eight six four, dated February eighth, twenty twenty-one, last revised May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, drawn by Civil Design Consultants, subject to the terms and conditions under the certificate of conditional approval dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as amended this evening.
Second that, Mr. Pierce.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, now, just before we vote, I just wanna remind you that there, you may not know, but there have been issues with storage on this site before, so, um. So please, take that back to them, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, and while we're.
I'll ma- yeah, I'll make them aware.
Please do, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? Let the record show four in favor and no opposed. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you too. Instead of just this much of you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
He's just, he wanted to get out of the house.
Show support for this public meeting.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, before you move on, and Genzo.
Well, it's the first live one.
Just, um, this is something I think we probably would all like you to take back to the Board of Selectmen, in that we, Chris and I were talking earlier tonight with Phil about how many people, how many more people were involved in our meetings when we did the Zoom meetings? And how it would be, how it might be that we would be able to invite people into this meeting, other than them having, because if they watch on TV, they don't participate. You know, but we had a lot of participation in our meetings, more than we've ever had before. I suggested it's probably the same on the, on the Board of Selectmen. So I, I would imagine there's some technology could allow us to do that, but it may be, there may be a cost to it. So that's where the Board of Selectmen come in.
So, um, my understanding is that there will be an option based on what's, okay. So let's back up a little bit. As of right now, we're back to pre-rules.
Right.
Because nothing I passed.
Right.
However, my understanding of what is in the bill is to allow, pretty much to continue what was always allowed. So at any point, the Select Board could have voted from day one, last March twenty twenty, to meet a person. That was a lot. It just that no one was doing it because of the circumstances.
Right, right.
Uh, this time around, and I cannot speak for the whole board, however, I can give a opinion that I feel that the hybrid option would be popular. I also do feel that at least a quorum of the elected actual board in person would be highly desirable. Let's put it there. So I think the hundred percent remote option, I, again, I can't speak for the board, I just, you know, inclination is that it would, I don't think we'd be back to where we were two weeks ago. But I do agree that the hybrid works, especially, especially for school board. Because a lot of parents can't make it out. You know, remember when you had young kids, it becomes harder, so.
Only one person won.
Uh.
Only one person won.
So, yeah. So, yeah, so, yeah, but that's definitely.
But it also occurs to me that, that in the, in the winter time, under an inclement weather situation, a meeting would not need to be canceled, we could do it like the schools do.
Although, although going forward, I do believe the, after September, when it goes back to normal, the Select Board would have to re-vote again what was the pre-COVID rules, which is pretty much you could do hybrids. However, I do, I know, Clark Stan's made it very clear that, I, I just bring it up to your point, that it cannot be used out of convenience.
Right.
So meaning, if there's a snowstorm, you'd have to, may.
You still have to come in.
You still have to come in.
Weed them.
Three, two.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And my understanding also is, I think, were you guys on that meeting where the chair cannot be remote at any time? Or you'd have to pass on the?
The gavel.
The gavel, for that meeting, so.
I have a little drive, I'll be.
So do I.
I think the hybrid approach, I mean, well, let's see first where it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying, we're.
You're the front-end loader.
Yeah, I do, I do.
I'm surprised they didn't vote it in.
I, you know, I, I think, I think what we're talking about is not for us. Cause for what we do, looking at this stuff, it's a whole lot different than reading words. But maps, you know, looking at big maps and, and, you know, discussing it where we're a little closer together, and pointing a question out, and getting the answers between ourselves and stuff. During, even during the pub, you know, during the public hearings, we're not trying to get away from that. It's bringing the other population into our meetings and getting their comments.
Getting their input.
And that, that really helps us.
Yeah.
And we got a lot of that during the, the totally, you know, Zoom meeting issues. I mean, I could only see nine people on my screen, but I would go up and see who the participants were, and we had twenty people at times.
Yeah, yeah.
You know? Uh, it was a lot of people. It was a lot of people. And you can see what we have tonight.
The issue that comes after the emergency order, then the technology is an issue. So under, if they pass an extension of the emergency order till September, you don't really have to verify that your technology's gonna work a hundred percent. And if all of a sudden Zoom stops working, well, tough. That's part of what you were able to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So again, it's something where we, I think it was looked at before, and I don't think it's prohibitive, but I think if the state, I feel like if the state's gonna mandate it, I can already see the pushback from every single locality, well, you're gonna give somebody the state for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty much. Uh, so yeah, but I mean, if there's a way to do it, it is. Because then, the issue is if you don't have the proper technology. If I was under the impression that I could participate remotely, and I didn't wanna shovel up my car, and then I didn't get to, and then all of a sudden stopped working, now you have an issue of, well, didn't you say this would work? So again, it's a, I, I don't know, but, I don't know, but like, I, I'm sure, at least till September, it'll be a little easier than after that. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
It should be, I mean, again, I, you know, for, for me, it's very simple. I think the other only thing I've read on is that communities that do have, and I mentioned the Select Board meeting, it's not as straightforward. I like the joke, it's definitely not an iPhone where you can just hit the home button, and you can get back to square one. That's how I was able to get my dad on it, cause I'm like, if you ever get nervous, just press the home button and you're back. So the, the question then becomes, is, doesn't become too complicated based on what it is.
Right, right.
You know, cause I know that like, I mean, I'm not saying my parents are that old, but I can tell you that they would, if, if it wasn't straightforward, like Zoom it, it become, you know, it becomes one of those things where it's like, well, if you wanna speak, you have to type in your name, and you have to press this, because now, you know, as part of it, like, I, I guess.
That was, that was, that was, that was what we were talking to Phil about a little bit, about can we have those faces all up on the screen?
Over there.
Yeah, so that we can actually see them, so they can put their hand up. So they don't have to type in, in, in very much the Zoom for, the, very much the Zoom format.
But I do think that for, yeah, that's definitely, and really, the only time an issue really arises is if when the actual board wants to start doing hi, uh, remote. Cause now that becomes a.
Yeah, we're not looking, I don't think, I don't think the board itself is looking at going remote. We wanna bring, we wanna bring other people in, hybrid, in a hybrid setting.
We wanna give people, especially maybe people that are, that are mobile, older people that, you know.
And also, I was thinking that maybe you can also do it where discretion of the board, whether a meeting goes full in person, if it's a hot topic where, you know what, we can't have fifty people yelling out here, plus have to deal with Zoom.
Right, right.
So, an example, if it was a hybrid, like when we had sixty people for Carperdor Drive, that could have been chaos. So maybe that's one where it's like, you know what, no, the CPC's gonna do this a hundred percent in person in a bigger space.
Yeah.
Right.
I do think the chair should have the authority for that, because, you know. And definitely, I think, I mean, I'm way ahead of myself here, but I definitely think we're nowhere near trying to do like a town meeting that way.
Oh, no, no.
I mean, you know, that, that would just.
No.
You know? There are some that still, that already start talking about, well, can we do a town meeting like that? It's like.
Now, I think we were mostly, I think what mostly we were doing is hoping to have, you know, especially when we have neighborhood issues or subdivision, that we give the people in that whole neighborhood the opportunity, more opportunity to become involved in the, in the conversation. If, if they're not physically mobile, or if they have, like you said, kids at home, you know, so that we don't exclude them.
And also, it's, what's nice about it is you can sign on and just, when you hear the topic you wanna, you know, rather than playing, sometimes I know, like, we do a, like, the guessing game of just because it says, especially for the Select Board, just because it says eight fifteen.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean anything.
It doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, come at nine thirty, and it might be, you might be on time.
Maybe. But it's easier to, I guess, do it from your couch versus, you know, showing up and then, you know, you run out of internet waiting for it. You know, it's like, I've read everything I possibly can that I'm interested in, I have to start reading about, like, you know, zoos in the nineteen fifties. Like, you can get real bored, so. But yeah, no, I'll pass that on, because it seems like that's the.
Well, I mean, it, it, there's probably gonna be a cost to it, so the Board of Selectmen would have to.
Till September, though, I think the school committee's actually done it where, the way they've done it is, this will be a little different. They've, they've just, they've had all their laptops in front of them, so they're on the screen. But they've been meeting, I think, in a, in the school. I think they've been doing it for a while, yeah.
Yeah, in person, but without the audience, so just the board.
Correct.
And nobody else in the room.
So, um, but yeah, I guess we'll, we should be able to figure something.
Okay.
And, and then first we have to see what's gonna be allowed.
Yep.
You know, cause I'm, I'm actually curious to see that.
Yeah. I mean, it gets lost in translation, but we could not have done that without the governor's order.
Yes.
That's, so that's true. So you do lose that, that concept, you think we could just do it cause we want to, but we can't. There's the governor's order that allows us to do that.
Again, when it expires in September.
Yeah, that's the order that allows us to do it, so.
When it expires in September, based on the pre-COVID rules, if you did it, it wasn't that simple. Like, you, you had to, you know, again, it had to be something where you had to prove that you were doing it, like.
Right.
I, I feel like the convenience thing was, pre-COVID, it was really hard to do.
Yeah.
It seems like if you did it, you were gonna have, like, you were gonna have eyes on you of like, that reason you said, it better really be that. Cause if it turns out that just because no one feels like driving to town hall, we're gonna have an issue at the state level, so. But yeah.
Well, we, I think the COVID thing pushed us in a direction to, to learn, to learn a lot of things, so that was, that was good. All right, thank you.
Stuff that the businesses were doing just came out, came to the forefront.
Okay, Danielle, um, the PA updates this.
Yeah, so, um.
Public address?
Where, so, you might remember, we're working with T E C to, um, uh, to do this study for Route twenty eight, which was funded at the, uh, October town meeting, um, or was it June last year? Anyway, it's been about a year.
Whatever it was.
They've, they've been on their way, um, doing the conceptual design and traffic study for Route twenty eight. And as part of that process, they wanted to put out a survey. Um, I took a look at the survey, and I think that this is a nice, easy, simple set of questions that isn't crazy complex, but asks a few things that we wanna know. If there were bike lanes, would you take advantage of them? How important do you think it is to have sidewalks? Things like that. And so, I don't know if you might have a chance to take a peek through it, just to make sure these questions seem reasonable. I didn't see anything in here that was, you know, overly off-putting. It's nice and short, seems like, you know, in contrast to some surveys we've had in the past.
Does it ask all the questions we need to know?
It just asked a few things, a few key things that the consultant wants to know, as they wanna go ahead with.
So is this, this survey's gonna be sent out to the general public?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the timeframe on that?
Um, I, I'm not sure, but I would think it would be soon, as soon as John Kupel and I give our okay for that.
So, if I may?
Yeah, please.
We've done all the surveys. It'd be nice to know what the gentleman, or the, what they wanna get from this. So that when we're looking at the survey, it makes sense to us.
Good idea.
So he needs to send us a couple paragraphs of what he needs, how he's gonna use it. So when I review this, and I say, oh, this'll work. I mean, some of the studies we've done, we've, we did a lot of, there were a lot of things to check, and a lot of answers to answer, and they didn't answer all the questions. Didn't even come close to answering all the questions. And they were too long.
So do you mean a description of what we want to get out of this provided in the survey? Or do you mean for us, so that we know?
What, what, the, the, the company that's working on this?
Yes.
Right, the, the contractor?
Yes.
Consultant.
Consultant. Needs to, needs to know something. We need to know what he needs to know.
So I think what they need to know is, um, they are gonna be making some basic suggestions for new design. And that basic suggest, those basic suggestions might include things like, you know, the middle turning lane, like Reading is, you know, has, has done. And they, there are a few big things that they can do, and so they are trying to have these questions answered to inform their, their concepts that they're gonna then prepare for us.
Right, and that's, that's, you know, that's where I, I wanna make sure that what they're asking here is gonna answer those questions for them, so that the concept that they bring back to us is what we, we want also.
Oh, sure.
But if, if, if I don't understand what they're looking for, then the survey.
Do you think that it's clear what they're looking for by these questions, or?
I haven't really looked at it.
Oh, okay, don't say it.
I gotta be honest, I haven't really looked at this yet. Yeah, you put it in today, I haven't looked at it.
Yeah, there's some questions I would love to see asked, but perhaps of the police department, say, you know, um, does incorporating a middle lane into your, into the traffic patterns, so there's a two left, right each way, and a middle lane for, for turns, what's the effect on the number of accidents in a given area?
Well, we, we hope that the traffic engineers have that kind of information, right? I mean, they should be able to take crash data and statistics and use it to inform their.
Number one, you might as well just throw up. If we're asking people in North Reading, ask them if they're a, a resident in North Reading. It's Main Street. Everybody uses Main Street.
Yeah, but.
You know?
You don't think it's helpful to know whether the direct butters?
The person responding to the survey, it's, it doesn't.
Well, they ask you that, it asks whether you're a commuter, whether.
Yeah, they wanted to, are you a direct to butter? You wanna know how you're gonna use Main Street.
But then they didn't ask that.
Right, so I think that's why they ask. I mean, to me, that's.
It's the first question, it asks if, what's your kind of interest? If you're Reading, a North Reading resident, or you're just a regular commuter?
No, I understand, it's just, I've been down, I've been down this road once before, and, and the answers we got out of it, and the people didn't, they got to this, they got to the question, didn't answer it, didn't go any farther.
But that's a pretty easy question.
It is an easy question.
And if we heard that businesses want one thing, and residents want something else, or butters want a third thing, then maybe that will help the consultant figure out some solutions that address some concerns. I don't know, I mean, to me, it seems helpful, but.
Danielle, how, how does this go, how does this get up to people, just to put a notice?
Um, I think they suggested, I mean, I guess it's up to us how we wanna do it. It can be, if, we can use our usual avenues of, you know, the website, an email blast, we could advertise something in a transcript, we could put things out in media, if we wanted to, you know, put some money into it, we could do a mailing. Um, that's usually the best response we get is a mailing. We usually get pretty good responses from surveys, so.
I know, there was, there was a couple of surveys that I, I talked to people, were so long, and they were so complex.
Right, but this is.
They got halfway through it, and then they went, I'm not doing it anymore.
Well, sure, but I think we'll have an easy question.
Well, no, 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 and, and their easy questions end at nine.
And then what?
And then you got ten and eleven. And then you got extra. It's like, at nine, there should be a submit button, so you can just submit it then, you don't have to answer the extra. You don't have to, people will, some people will not go farther.
Okay, so are you saying it's too long?
Well, no, they can do ten and eleven, but there should be a line in there saying, if you're done, submit. If you wanna add extra information, continue.
Okay.
You following what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, so options to submit after nine?
Yes, yes. Just, just so we don't lose the people that went through and did the nine real important things, and didn't do any of the optional stuff.
Sure, I mean, ten is easiest, I mean.
Because they get scared of the optional stuff.
Scared of the optional stuff. I mean, you're still, you didn't get it, right?
Well, sometimes these things, if you don't put stuff in the optional blocks, they think you're not answering it. You haven't run into one like that?
If it's optional, well, it's.
If some, some, and it.
Optional kinda means you don't have to.
Yeah.
That's true, but it's not, it's not the survey, it's the engine that's running the survey. It's a dumb engine. It looks, oh, there's a block there, it needs to be filled in. There's, there's, there's four little things there, you gotta fill one of those in. Cause if you don't fill them in, it won't, it, it keeps sending you back.
I can make sure that it's sent on a survey platform that won't do that. Because optional has to mean optional.
Yes, optional need to get them optional.
Quick comment. I mean, this reminds me of David's comments about the accessory drawing questions in some of the prior surveys we've done. And the whole thing just seemed to kinda lead down, like, do you want bike lanes or not? But the bike lane questions aren't low, like, yeah, would I like to have bike lanes? Have you just had this massive roadway? Yes, but is it gonna take away a, a lane of the road? Is it gonna be a bike lane that has little orange pilings that get hit by the plows every year and never get replaced? And then all of a sudden, it's just as dangerous as it was before, but we lost six feet on each side? Like, I, I feel like it just, it, it asks questions that beg for uninformed, uninformed answers, like, right? Everyone's gonna respond, like, yeah, sure, bike lanes, great.
Yeah.
But like, what's the trade-off, right? The road's not getting any bigger, right of ways is not getting any bigger. What's, what, and what expenses are coming at? What do those look like? And what is the state actually gonna let us do?
To your point, if you agree, if you say, no, I don't wanna center the land, I wanna keep four lanes, and then you say, yes, I want bike lanes, where the hell do you gotta put them?
That's a useless answer, right?
Right, there you go.
And the K-Roll Street's a great example, they wanted a bike lane on it. Basically, just repainted the breakdown lane, they put a little bike guy in there.
Yeah.
They put up a couple share the road signs. It's no more safe for bicyclists now.
Yeah, but when the road narrows back down, it disappears again.
It just goes away, right? It just goes away, right. And then you get North Reading, and it's gone, because North Reading didn't decide to put up bike lanes sides. So it's not really a bike lane anyway. I guess, I don't know, I just see this push for bike lanes everywhere, not the anti-bike lanes.
That's kind of what I'm saying. It's like, is this just a push for bike lanes, or is it, is it a really, uh, 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 read, you know, getting survey about designing the roadway?
Right.
You know, this looks like it's, uh, to your point, you want bike lanes.
I feel like you can almost go back and just say, skip the survey, show us an option with bike lanes and an option without bikes.
Yeah, true. I mean, in a way.
There you go.
What are we losing to gain bike lanes?
Jarvis, 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 that center lane option, and what they're doing in Reading, does that provide enough room for bikes?
And if it does, what will they?
And it actually should.
Yeah, and I, I kind of agree with that, like, why, why just, why not skip over this, just provide the options, what they look like?
Because otherwise, I'm afraid we're just gonna give options with bike lanes.
Yeah, because I don't think the average person's not opposed to bike lanes, right?
And people who don't ride bikes are opposed to bike lanes, believe it or not.
They gotta fit.
They don't want, they don't want to see bikes on the road if they don't ride a bike. Some people are like that.
Yeah.
I mean, I work with a guy who, you know, doesn't, you know, they're in a way. Because bikes run at, they're supposed to be running on the rules of the road, but how many do? I had one yesterday. I was in Withrow. She coasted through her stop sign. And, or actually, it wasn't stop, it was red light. She coast, the, the car stopped, she coasted right through the red light, and finally stopped, just before I was, as I was taking the corner with a green light, with a big, big van, just in time so I wouldn't run into her.
Yeah.
You know, but I was watching her.
Was that in a bike lane?
No, no bike lane.
I just think bike lanes somewhat formalize that, in that they do make you more susceptible to getting a citation if you're in a bike lane and not operating your bike.
I, I don't know.
It forms the law, but, but you're right, when they're just on the side of the road, you see people, that's one of the problems, I think. It is just more of a free-for-all approach to biking, but when it goes more formal, I think.
I'll give you another example, though, too, like, with Main Street, if you do get sore someday, high in the sky, and you do bring in more businesses along the roadway, people realize that, like, putting in a bike lane may then take away the chance for, like, off, on-street parking that would facilitate the businesses. So do you want bike lanes, or do you want, uh, redevelop Main Street? Like, because they may be mutually exclusive, depending on how the roadway is designed. You gotta think about that when you're thinking about bike lanes now.
That's right.
I don't know. Maybe I'm just overthinking it, but I think that it simplifies it a little too much. Especially when I, not to insult the general public, but you're asking people who go do this on a daily basis, or see this stuff all the time, so they, again, you're just like, yes, I like, I ride my bike, it'd be great to get on my bike and be able to get out Main Street to a safe lane.
Doesn't make, doesn't make it any safer, because the car's still right there.
And I know for a fact it doesn't make it safe. So, I don't know, that'd be my comment.
It's a false, it's a false sense of safety.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So we don't like the survey?
It's all right.
Do we want to, so I guess my question is, is the feedback that any set of questions really should wait until after? Because they're really only doing one conceptual design. They're not doing a bunch of designs for us, and then we pick. It's one design that this project encompasses. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, do we not want to do a survey? And they just tell us what they think, or do we want to tell them that the questions that pertain to bike lanes have to be really specific, like, would you consider, you know, bike lanes to be an improvement considering, you know, a few things, such as removal of traffic lanes, uh, removal of a possible option of on-street parking, should that ever become feasible? I don't know, do we want it to be, do we want like a few scenarios that they quickly ask us about? I guess I'm just trying to figure out, what should we tell them we want to do with this? Like, we didn't give them the questions. They came up with the questions and said, this is the set of questions we're thinking of. What, what do you think? So I, I want to tell them.
My preference would be they're designing a roadway for cars. Give us a good design for the roadway.
With sidewalks.
With sidewalks.
With sidewalks. That's, that's been the law forever, you know, you're gonna have, you're supposed to have a sidewalk.
If we want to think of sixty-two was a bike path, and had a bike lane the whole way, then I'd say, well, connect six, like, design a bike path to connect the two pieces where twenty-eight intersects. What are we connecting to? There's nothing, there's nothing north, there's nothing south. Just create an isolated two-mile bike lane.
Well, I think on twenty-eight, the, the concept here is to, is to facilitate, um, the people who live in the town of North Reading, to give them the ability to go to the businesses in the town of North Reading. I mean, that's kind of the thing. So having sidewalks on both sides, so that no matter which side of twenty-eight you live on, it's, if you get, once you get to twenty-eight, it's walkable, you know, both ways, with crosswalks and all the amenities that go with it. So that, I think that's one, one thing. But then the second thing is, if, if you're gonna talk of bicycles, then the question is, where do the bicycles, are the bicycles not gonna ride on the sidewalk? They're gonna go into, if you're gonna really encourage bicycle traffic on twenty-eight, then you really need to dedicate some, uh, some space for them, because, uh, they don't mix well.
Yeah.
So you're right, either to buy, either design a road for cars, or design a road for bicycles and see if you can fit the cars in. That's almost the way it is.
Yeah.
Right. And I'd rather prioritize the pedestrians and better sidewalks, maybe on-street parking in some places to encourage business than you would dedicating, you know, basically a lane to the roadway for bikes.
Just a personal observation, I drive back and forth on this road all day long, you know, a number of times. So, um, and I get gas at the gas station, and I come around to pull out, and to be honest with you, very rarely is there much of a weight to pull out of that gas station. Ninety percent of the time, a lot of times, I can, you can just pull right up, there's none coming either way, you can drive right out. So that, so, and that's during the day, okay? So I'm sure that rush hour, things are, you know, well, I know that rush hour things are a little different, but not radically different. So there's plenty of room on that road, I guess is the point that I'm making here. Plenty of room in that road, so you could have single lane going both ways. And I don't think you would really bother anything too much and have a turn lane in the middle. So, so the question I would want answered, and I started to ask it before, was, does that center lane, turn lane, make that road safer? And, because if you, if, if the answer is yes, well, then you're gonna go from four lanes to three lanes. Now you've got some room for some, for a bicycle lane on either side.
Or you can park it on one side.
Well, I don't, you're not gonna park on twenty-eight. No, no. Not gonna park on twenty-eight. No.
Well, that was all, you have to slow it down.
Slows it down?
Too many mirrors. Forget it.
It's done.
Uh, you know, I mean, uh, you need some, if you're gonna put a bike lane, here's some room for a bike lane, so, I mean, so that would be, I think that, so, so, yeah, no, but it goes back to, we already kind of know what, what people would, are gonna say. Do you want a sidewalk? Well, of course. I don't want to walk in the street, I don't want to walk in the grass. So do you want a bike lane? Or if you ride a bike, your answer's gonna be yes. If you're not happy with bikes, you'd say no. So, I mean, you know, so that, so, 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 so to your point, it might be, make sense to, like you said, do a concept and see if you like it.
Mr. Chairman, too, I would say, what's almost more valuable than trying to draw, you know, this two-point-six or four-mile stretch as a plan is, uh, just a few sections really showing what, what a cross, a cross section of. Here's a, here's your turn lane, here's your travel lanes, here's your curb, here's your sidewalk. That's how much space that's allowed, or is present in that right-of-way, and you can do X or, or Y. And, and so just, instead of drawing the whole street.
Oh, yeah, so just do a cross section.
Yeah, you don't have to do the whole thing.
You don't have to do the whole thing, just draw.
Cross sections, like a, like an intersection.
They're kind of like elevations, depending, you know. But anyway, so, that's what I would, maybe, that was better, in a way.
Is that right-of-way consistent with the town board?
No, they're, I mean, John, I mean, it's important. They're, they're doing, they're counting, doing collections. It goes to this slightly.
But there's gonna be some areas that there's a side problem, is, you know.
Well, the difference would be, the difference would be the cross-section like at an intersection with lights.
Two questions, right?
And then the cross-section with just an intersecting roadway, and then a cross-section where there's nothing but just roads, right?
I've kind of listened to all that.
Here are three or four different scenarios that, that, that happen.
That's where it gets really dicey.
Are telling them they're not interested in bicycle, I mean.
No, I think, but I agree, I, I agree with Ryan's idea. They've concentrated a lot of questions on bicycles.
Okay.
You know?
This survey's gonna result in, yes, we're driving, designing with bikes, and we're designing.
That, that survey, I kind of agree more with Ryan. It's almost like a waste of time. Like, I, I agree, I like the idea of bike, but why even bother to survey? Just show what it would look like.
Yeah.
You know, because I think everyone in general would agree that it'd be great if we could fit that in. Let's, let's see if it fits in.
Can we, do we have these guys come in and talk to us, or?
Maybe, I can ask. I mean, they've been pretty much in data collection mode, um, and just as far as like traffic counts and stuff, but yeah.
I'd say, before we put this out, before we put this out.
Yeah, I, I don't see this as gonna solve any, any big things.
Let's have, let's see if we can have them show up, and we'll see if we can either.
I mean, if you think about it.
Modify that, modify that, um, modify that, that, that survey some, so that we can take the bicycle questions and put them as bicycle questions, and then the pedestrian questions, ask pedestrian, you know.
Okay.
And, and try and get it, try and get them a little more focused on what, what we really need to know.
Okay.
If you think about it, there's a, there's a sidewalk on one side. It may not be paved or asphalted, but there's a sidewalk all the way down Main Street from one end to the other.
Yeah, well, there's places where there is a sidewalk, where you can walk in the parking area, though, and then walk back out, so.
I mean, I don't think they're necessarily, you know, trying to put in leading questions on bikes in particular, but I do think that their scope of work, bike and pedestrian safety, was highlighted in their scope of work that they were given. So, I mean, I think they're responding to that, but it's, like, perfectly legitimate if we want to say, we want a different type of emphasis on bike versus on.
And this is, this is doing a lot of looking at what is today. We don't want what's today. We want to know, we want to make that road so it works fifty years into the future.
Well, sure.
Because how often do you use the road with a bike today? How often do you walk down Main Street today? That's what these questions ask. There's no real businesses on Main Street that are walkable in between the two.
But I think they're trying to establish, one, if we want bike facilities in the future, let's first get a baseline. How do people feel about it today? I think it's pretty obvious how people feel about it today, but I think they kind of need to establish, okay, X percent of people feel this way. No, no, I'm not saying that we shouldn't change the questions. I think we should. It's just, I think they're trying to say, establish what we have now, how people feel about it, and then ask, in the future, what would you like to see instead? I mean, I think that's the goal. If they're not getting there, then they're not getting there. We can tell them that. I'm just, you know what I mean? Like, I, I think they need to, well, yeah, I'll ask something in, that's fine.
Yeah, see if we can have them come in, and we'll try to focus them a little better on, or see what the, um, see what they're trying to do.
It'd be helpful to know what the deliverability is, because if it's just one, one section, then, like, I feel like just getting one with just the bikes is gonna be, not give us the full picture, right? To David's point, a few different options are, are more.
Fentezo, please.
To piggyback on Mr. Carroll's point, I do agree, too, that, uh, um, we've, uh, we've lowered Sore from pie in the sky to, you know, maybe just sky. You know, we got rid of the pie, so we're getting lower.
Getting lower, getting there.
Um, but I do agree that if you look, if you look at even, Reading's a great example. Have you noticed, uh, the bike lane is missing from their center? Uh, when you go almost towns, there is no bike lane.
Unless you can just add it, it actually, it's a disaster.
It's, yeah, so meaning that, but there's a reason why. And another thing, too, it's something where, to me, like, the bike lanes, I bike, right? If you're going through a center, I, I can tell you this, a bike lane will encourage, like, you can go pretty fast on a bike. I get up to like a twenty mile an hour, and I agree with Mr. Hayden that no one follows it, and you will have people, especially if we have a center, that will become a problem. If I'm walking with my six-year-old, and there's somebody going through, you know, at, at a pretty good clip. So again, I'm not saying it's a big thing, but I do agree that, like, it seems that some of the most walkable communities seem to be missing bike lanes in the most walkable part of town, which, if we're trying to one day do that, I, I do. So that's just my add, that, like, I agree, if it even remotely could make getting businesses in, because we're gonna need some buy-in for the Sore, I, I, we just don't, we just don't need to pile on. So that, that, that should be, uh, a, again, people will disagree, but from my perspective, where I'm really trying to push Sore and get everybody on board, like, we don't need another reason for a business to say, no. I'm not gonna put my business here and then compete with my outside tables with, you know.
Bikes go by.
Yeah.
People walk around tables, they don't, they walk around them. Bikes will, you never know what they'll do.
Correct. And actually, there was an article, too, that I'll take you on. I mean, today, um, there was a survey from readers that maybe Boston should be more walkable, and, um, there was also a study that showed that all where they put the bike lanes around all the parks, they don't get used, and now it's just causing traffic jams. Bike lanes are empty, and now you just added twenty minutes of traffic. That's all you really did. You know why? Because we do not have the weather here for bikes. Six months out of the year, you can't ride a bike. Except if you're hardcore.
And if you put a protected bike lane, then you can't plow it, because you gotta.
That's right.
Barrier.
Oh, no, you can plow it, you just have to hire somebody to do it manually.
Get one of those special, well, cap plows.
So again, I mean, again, this is a CPC, but I figured just.
No, that's okay.
It's interesting there, right? And you guys brought it up.
I think you're probably, I think you're probably echoing what, what we're doing. We're, we're looking at this to say, this is, this is a referendum on bike lanes, not on traffic, and that may, may not be the best, that's not the best plan.
It's traffic on Main Street is what we're, we're looking at.
About what their plan is.
In, in safe pedestrian travel.
And making it business-friendly, right?
Yeah, business-friendly. Business-friendly is walking from place to place, right?
So are we working, and it looks like it's making good progress on the actual, the bike path?
I don't know what the status of that feasibility is.
It seems like there were a couple of things. I mean, Mr. Wall already gave an update, where it seems like they're getting, I mean, it, like, that's something that has support. We just have to, you know.
That the one down, down the, uh, Ipsos?
To do, yeah, I mean, but again, it's something rare. Is that it? Because, are we doing it for recreation, or are we doing it for transportation?
Recreation.
Recreation.
Yeah. Is it, we're doing it for transport, because if we're just doing it for recreation, I think the, I think doing it on a Main Street, it's like, well, you know, and you're right, Hable Street, whether or not they have bike lanes, I almost die every morning.
Yeah, we just know the bike lanes.
Was that you that I, I, no, I'm really kidding.
All right. So I think, I think we're gonna let this lay for now, and we'll see if we can get these people in, we'll talk to them.
Yeah, I'll invite them in, um, to our next meeting, and I, I do think the scope of work they were given included all kind of complete street elements. If we want there to be significantly less emphasis on bike lanes, I think we can let them know. But I think they're kind of going on.
Right, so we should see this, we should know what the scope of work is.
Yeah.
That, you know, that's kind of, kind of what I, what I started this, was where are they coming from?
Yeah.
You know, we gotta know so you can design this, and if it's, and if it's from that scope of, of work, then maybe we have an issue with it. I think we might have some of it.
I mean, that can be changed. I mean, most of what they've done so far is collect traffic data, and that's supposed to inform what the new design would look like. And I think they are kind of going on the assumption, as most people do when they talk about pedestrian safeties, they kind of include bike safety in it. But if that's something that we would rather they step away from, or be really specific about one bike question, like, do you, how much of an emphasis do you want placed on biking?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Would you use it daily?
Would you use it ever? Yeah.
Ever.
Something like that.
I'd like them to answer questions about, about the bike lanes that you talked about by the parks that are just creating traffic jams. I'd like to say, I, I'd like to ask them, you know, why, you know, this doesn't seem to be working, so why are we doing this?
Right. They may also have past examples, other four-lane roads that have renovated. I mean, presumably, they don't have the sections on this one yet, but they have some other ones that might kind of spur some discussion about what, what looks good and what.
Well, there's some, like, one fourteen.
Pulling cross-sections out is easy.
Or on one fourteen, where they put the third lane in, there are a couple of roads that are very difficult to get out, and having the third, and having that middle lane.
Oh, that's great. You only have to cross one lane of traffic.
Yeah.
At a time. You're pulling to that lane, and then you can, then you can merge with this, the, the traffic that's going forty-five.
So there are places where that, where that works really well.
Does everyone honk at you when you do it, though? Everyone always honks when they do it.
Occasionally, they do, because they don't know what you're doing, because they don't know how to use it.
You can't wait till the last minute, you gotta get out that road.
No, the people are going the same way, are you? I think that I'm about to cut them off.
Yeah, they don't understand how it's used. That's the problem. They never, rotaries.
And then they wonder why it's so easy when you don't cut them off, and they, you manage to blend it, and then they go, oh.
That's why. It's like rotaries. Who was taught, when you were in driver's ed, how to use a rotary? Who was taken in a rotary when you were in driver's ed, with a driving teacher here? No one. No one. I've asked the kids that are, that are taking driver's test, you know, of course, they don't take you in the rotaries.
You never get out?
Yeah.
It's, it, it's very easy to use these rotaries, you know? And little, little handout that I got in Ireland, it, like, works here, except you go in the other way, that's all.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, when I was in England, I ran that club, none of the rotaries didn't get out.
Yeah. There is, there is, there are a couple like that in Italy.
All right, well, we'll, um, we'll, um, have them come in, and we'll try to, we'll try to find out exactly what they're, what they're planning, what they're trying to find out.
We only got one thing left.
And one we think we got, yeah, we only got one thing.
But we don't, we don't have a full, a full loss.
Again, we don't have a full board, but do, do we want to wait, I mean, still, again? Although we did talk to Jeremiah a little bit about. Although we did talk to Jeremiah a little bit about it at the...
We did.
At the, um...
No, but this is just, this is, yeah, it's kind of tough to do liaisons unless we reorganize. We need to do that.
All right. Well, then, I will turn this, turn the meeting over to you, Danielle, and we'll do our reorganization.
You, you'd like to do tonight?
Yeah, yeah, but if we hadn't had a, a good conversation at the town meeting with you and Arpauro, but we, we are, we are...
That's right. Okay, um, and I will, uh, take nominations for the position of chair.
I nominate Mr. Pierce.
Second in.
Is there any discussion?
Other nominations?
I'm sorry, oh, other nominations, thanks, Chris. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Uh, Mr. Pierce is the chair.
Okay, uh, same nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Mr. Pierce.
Back up?
There's a second, if you will.
You nominated Chris?
Yes.
And you in second? Can he second it? Chris accepts?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, to record show.
We need, we need a clerk.
I know. We have a good system working here, we really do. So, um, Ryan, are you okay staying as clerk?
I'm fine with that, plus, uh, Mr. Redloff, if I don't, uh, step up?
All right, so, um, you have a nomination, so Ryan, clerk, and, uh, Mr. Redloff has a second bid. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close?
In the next year, we'll get, uh, we'll get Jeremiah into the mix.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, give him a year. I think, I think from what I have to say is he wants a year to understand what's going on.
I don't blame him. I, I'll tell you something, I'll tell you, you know, I mean, my first term, I hardly said much of anything, I listened the whole time. But I had some really great people on, I had some really great people on the board, you know?
Oh, I know those people.
Rick Ascanes.
Yeah.
He was just one of the best people in the world. He was very good, and I learned a lot from him, so, my first term, so...
You just realized it, it's like, ooh.
Yeah.
Mrs. Romeo nominated me vice chair my first term.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And I think I was vice chair for the first term. She got somebody to second me.
So, uh, so, but, uh...
We heard the drink at the bar. Just one time.
So, do we want to make, well...
We should, maybe we can do this the next time.
Oh, the liaisons?
By them?
You could keep them, I mean...
Well, Jonathan Cody, Jonathan Cody's not here anymore. Bill's not here anymore.
Bill Vanavans isn't here anymore either, so...
Oh, yeah, that doesn't help. We could do them at the next meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do them at the next meeting, and then we'll tell Jeremiah to look at these and see if, if he'll take over something.
If he wants to take one, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I can imagine.
Because we do, we do need to, we do need to, you know, parse them out a little bit. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll keep the, the historic district and the historic commission, I mean, that's not a problem for me, and I can still do the finance committee.
Yeah, I'll keep every, I'll keep everything I got, so...
And, and obviously, the EDC, since I am the EDC rep right now.
Are we doing liaisons tonight or not?
Not really.
No.
Well, you know, we're, we're... Just, there's a whole bunch that still need to be...
Oh, I know.
So, yeah, we'll wait on them.
So, we'll do them at the next meeting.
Um, are we signing plans for two hundred with the bus?
Oh, we have plans?
Um, don't we have to wait for the Board of Appeals to...
Yeah.
I don't think you have to...
They've already approved them.
Yeah, I don't think you have to wait. You can, I mean, you can if you want to, but I don't think you have to. I mean, they can't build it if they don't get their board...
Jeremiah, Jeremiah voted on that, Ryan didn't. Jeremiah asked.
I, I think any of you can endorse them as a board member.
It's just type plans, we don't know, it's not like they have a board.
It's not something, yeah, it's just, it's just, it's the, it's the approved stamp, basically.
Okay.
It doesn't have a lot, it's, it's totally up to you. If you want to do it next time, you can do it.
Yeah, they're not going anywhere. Let's do it next time.
Okay, well, yeah, because they're not gonna, yeah, why don't you put it on the agenda for next time, because I don't, it's really not on our agenda either, so...
Okay.
Speaking of next time...
Yeah, speaking of our next meeting, why don't we talk a little about schedule? When is everyone free to meet next?
All right.
I'm assuming, uh, the week of July fourth is not going to be a good time.
Not for him.
Not, or me, and I won't be here, but, I, I mean, you can have a meeting without me, that's fine.
You mean July sixth?
Oh, that's my birthday.
She's all gonna be here for the first two weeks.
July sixth.
Is it room?
It is.
What's that?
I'm not gonna be here July sixth, it's my birthday.
Aw, for you.
I've been on, I've been in this room or the room down the hall many times on my birthday, I refuse to shoot.
Good for you. Well, I'm gone the first two weeks, and I'm sure Warren is busy the first two.
Well, I'm going the se, I'm going the twelfth through the sixteenth, so...
Me too.
Uh, the twentieth is a CPC meeting, it says, so...
Should we just make the twentieth our next meeting, then?
We could do that. I mean, we could meet, can we meet on the twenty-ninth? That would be in two weeks, on June, uh, twenty-eighth, uh, yeah, twenty-ninth.
We don't really have anything.
Nothing?
I mean, the only things that I, we don't have any applications. Um, I, I did, and I was gonna do this tonight, I just wanted to run through a brief list of the things that we are considering for the warrant for October, and I wanted to try to maybe prioritize with you a little bit, to see if we want to do all of those things, or if we want to choose a few to focus on. Um, we can talk about that on the twenty-ninth if you want to.
You want to, you want to do like a workshop on the twenty-ninth? This sounds like...
Well, well, actually, I, I want to remind, um, I don't know if I talked to you about this, Danielle, I think I did a little bit. Jerry Noel has, uh, three items he would like us to try to help him out with, that for, did you talk to him already?
He's mentioned to me that accessory dwelling units and kitchens, et cetera, he wants to talk about those.
Yeah, he's got, and he's got actually three different items, but I told him to, to put them in writing and get them to you...
Okay.
So that we could, um, so that we could look at them and maybe, some of it's just, you know, cleanup, if you will, make things a little clearer for him.
Maybe that would work on the twenty-ninth, then, doing like a little workshop, you know, and, and maybe get Jerry to come in.
Why don't I ask Jerry if he's available that night?
Yeah.
And if he is, we can address those things.
You know, we could, we could do, we could do his items first...
Yeah.
And then send him on his way, and we can finish up with what you've got...
Sure.
As, as a workshop, and, and be done with it.
Let's do a workshop on town meeting related things, and I can list what they are, and we can talk out those topics and see...
I don't know if that works for everybody else here, the twenty-ninth?
For me?
Yeah.
The last Friday of the month, uh, last Tuesday of the month, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
June twenty-ninth.
Okay?
So, what I had, and tell me if you want me to add anything, and we can discuss further things on the twenty-ninth too, but, um, inclusionary zoning, where we require a certain percentage of affordable for every multifamily, accessory dwelling units, um, the affordable housing overlay district parcels, um, to have an RFP for disposition for development.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask that.
Um, carpenter drive, which it would be great to get our small group together soon to see where we're going with that, but that would be another possibility, um...
It's all right.
So, those, I, I have those four things as being priorities for...
Can we, you know, can we, uh, just, Dr. Strain, for our small group, do you talk about, can we zoom that?
We probably can. Do you want me to, do you want me to just verify that and we don't have to have a...
I have an instant update for you, if you'd like.
Oh, yes.
As of right now, the latest language will extend the provision to, and don't quote me on this, because they can change it six times before they vote, April first, twenty-twenty-two, where the chair of whatever the board is will decide whether to do it in person or hybrid, no select board approval needed.
Cool.
Does it have to be at least hybrid? Can it be fully remote, or is that no longer an option?
Yeah, but you're not, you're not talking a full meeting, you're talking a subset.
It can be fully remote, my understanding, like before.
Yep.
Oh, I thought we were talking about our meeting on the twenty-ninth.
No, 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 no. You have apples, oranges, and...
I'm sorry, I, I don't really...
So, we got three different things going on.
Okay.
One of them is, is our small group for carpenter drive, and then one of them is Zoom meetings for, um, for everybody, you know, you know, for like if we decide that...
For the, for, for a regular CPC meeting.
Carpenter drive's not opposed to public meeting anyways, we think we can do that in June.
You can zoom that.
Yes. Yeah, was that what you were asking about, or...
Yeah, no, well, but then, when the temps will come in with our, with the update that we can, till April of twenty-two, you said?
Yeah.
We, the chair can make...
But it could change.
Can make an option to, uh, can chat, choose the option of having a full or remote meeting.
Okay.
That would be it?
Yeah.
But you weren't thinking about for June twenty-ninth, you were thinking...
No, 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 I thought, come in, come in for that, June twenty-ninth.
That was the third...
It's just gonna be us.
Yeah.
That was the third thing we were talking about, so we were talking about, out there three different things all at once here, we got them all conflated here, so...
Yeah. And I, and I think that's one night that, you know, we don't really...
Francesco, thank you very much for coming.
Good night, the temps.
Have a nice day.
Thank you.
You too. We will. I mean, I don't know if it, it would be one that we need to, to, uh...
I can talk to Phil about that.
Yeah, talk to Phil about, you know, what he feels about that, because it's gonna be a workshop.
Mm-huh.
You know, it's gonna, we're gonna be throwing stuff around, it's gonna be hard for people to follow, this, you know, it's no, it's nothing formal.
What, on the twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah...
It's up to you if you want, I mean, you don't have to do every single one that way, it's...
Right. I mean, if, if she wants to come and do it, you can come do it, we, we don't, you know, we're not hiding anything, because the door's always open for the public to come into our meetings.
But I would make arrangements beforehand if we were gonna do it, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that's a problem, I mean, you never know, you know? Um, if he wants to do that, wants to, you know, broadcast it, it would be okay.
Thanks.
We should have a, well, we, we should, we'll have an agenda anyway, so kind of, have some items on it.
Yeah.
And, and it really, we, 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 since some of these are items that Jerry's bringing up that may be of interest to builders and people in town, I think we should, we need to keep it open.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's an open meeting, absolutely.
Now, if we discuss all of the articles, um, if we discuss carpenter drive and whether or not we would want that to be on the warrant, will the neighborhood not be happy, not be happy?
Well, actually, I think, I think our discussion on, on carpenter drive is gonna be just by the small group, if you want us...
I mean, yeah...
I, I think you do a small group, and then it, whatever you come up with, then you involve...
Yeah, you're right. Maybe that's not a good item for the twenty-ninth, maybe that's just between the front and us as far as next steps.
Yeah, I would, you guys could zoom that in your small group.
Yeah, you're right.
Let that, let it go that way, you come up with a night, if, if you come up with something, then bring it to a regular meeting.
Okay, so we'll talk about the other three items and all that. Okay, no, that, that makes sense. Um, is there anything else for town meeting that I'm missing? I mean, we could bring it up on the twenty-ninth and talk it out then.
Yeah, I, right off the top of my head, I don't, I haven't worked it out.
Okay.
It doesn't mean I won't remember something, though.
That's fine. We can, you can bring it up that night and...
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're meeting on June twenty-nine, in the third week of July?
Right.
So, the twentieth of July?
That sounds right.
July twentieth?
No, June twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I meant the next one after twenty, sorry.
It's a holiday of some kind, but not for us.
No. It's each, every each.
Okay, I guess that's it for tonight.
That's kind of all I had for updates too, so...
Right.
Those things that I just talked about were kind of my last of updates, so...
That's all our updates, okay. We're done then?
We're done.